Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call to order this regular session of the City of Leavenworth Planning Commission. We do have a quorum. Planning Commissioners have received minutes of the June 5, 2017 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made to those minutes? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Some may.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? There's no old business. The new business item is 2017-15 rezoning 801 North Broadway Street. This will be a public hearing. I just want to briefly discuss the process that's used for a public hearing and what will result at the end of it. Initially, we will hear a staff report from the city planner based on the request by the applicant and an explanation of the decision factors which will be used by the planning commission as far as its determination. The city planner will explain those planning factors and then also give us her results of the staff analysis that was done and their recommendations regarding those factors. The planning commission can accept or reject the recommendation of the city staff as far as their recommendations, but the planning factors themselves are what we will be using tonight as far as making our determination. Once the staff report has been provided, the planning commissioners will then ask questions of the city planner as appropriate and also of the applicant at this time as well. Once that's been completed, I will open the public hearing. At that time, anybody who wishes to speak for or against the recommended rezoning will be invited to come up to the podium, give us your name and your address, and then give us basically the issues that you wish to present. If anybody has any questions, the question should be addressed to the planning commission. And at the end of the question session, we'll get the applicant up there and we will ask the applicant the questions. What I'm saying is there should be no back and forth. When that happens, a lot of time, good information is out there and it's not received by us because we don't hear it, it's not on the record, and it's not considered as far as when we make our recommendation. When the public hearing has been completed, there'll then be a discussion among the planning commissioners as far as what we've heard and what we feel is appropriate, and then there'll be a motion that'll be acted upon by the planning commission. Basically, there's three motions that can come out of this. One is a motion to recommend to the city commission that we approve or that they should approve the rezoning request. Second is our recommendation to the city commission that they deny the rezoning request. And the third would be that we move that we table the motion because we don't have all the information we need to make a recommendation. So in this particular thing, as far as rezoning goes, we hold a public hearing, we gather the information and the facts, and we make a recommendation. We're not the final decision makers on rezoning. Okay, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and have the city planner give us a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, this is a rezoning request for 801 North Broadway Street. The request is to rezon the property from R16 High Density Single Family Residential to RMF Multi-Family Residential District. The property is commonly known as the North Broadway School. The applicant is requesting the rezoning in order to convert the school building into apartment units. Multi-family housing is not allowed in the R16 district, hence the reason for the rezoning request. They've proposed a total conversion of the building to a total of 27 one-bedroom market-rate apartment units. Existing parking will be retained in the rear of the building. They will have a total of 18 surface parking spaces along with 13 new garage spaces that they will be constructing. And we get the side plan out. To the right is north, so this is...to the top is the west. And here, to the west and south side of the parking, you can see where they've proposed the garage units. The existing building is a two-story U-shaped building. It was built in 1923. This property is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It was listed there in 2011. The Leavenworth Preservation Commission did have to consider this request since it is a listed registered property, and they did so last week, and voted unanimously to approve the changes to this property. As you said, there are a number of conditions of determination. I'll go through those with you now. The first is the character of the neighborhood. Again, the subject property is the former North Broadway School. It's currently vacant. To the south is another apartment building, a converted home that was turned into apartments. The remainder of the neighborhood is single-family homes. The property is located along Broadway Street, which is an arterial street and is designed to handle a high volume of traffic. The second is the zoning and use of the properties nearby. The property to the south is zoned RMF Multi-Family District, and the all other surrounding properties are zoned R16 High Density Single Family. The next condition is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. As I said, the subject property was built in 1923 as a school building. Schools aren't allowed use in the R16 zoning district. However, the property is privately owned. The school district does not own it at this time, and the existing building is unsuited for use as a single-family structure. In order to turn this property into single-family residences, the school would need to be torn down and the property divided up for single-family homes to be built. The next is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effect on surrounding properties. The subject building was previously utilized as a school and currently does sit vacant, and there is another multi-family building directly to the south of this. The applicant completed a similar project in 2015 at the former Bend Day School located at 1103rd Avenue, and it has been our feedback we've gotten from the neighborhood that that project had a positive effect overall on the neighborhood. The next condition is the length of time that the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. The existing building has been vacant since it was sold by the school district in 2010. May of 2010 was the last time that they had students in this building, and it's been vacant since that time. The next condition is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The rezoning of this property should have a net gain in property value due to the changes in the property and the way that taxes are assessed on them. The next condition is a recommendation of permanent professional staff. Staff does recommend approval of this request. Next condition is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized by the city. This area is identified as appropriate for multi-family on our future land use plan, and so staff does find it to be in conformance with that plan that we have in place. The next is any other such factors that may be relevant to the particular request. There are no other factors to be considered with this. The city's Development Review Committee did review this at their June 20 meeting, and you've been provided with those minutes. There were no major issues noted at that time. As I did mention before, the Preservation Commission did consider this request last week at their regular meeting, not the use, but just the proposed changes to the property. There were a number of neighboring residents in attendance at that meeting that had some concerns, I believe they're here tonight as well. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you. And as you said, the applicant is here as well and can answer questions also.
Any questions for Ms. Hore?
One question I have that probably you are the future is this comment about we'll set a new transformer, but we'll use existing utilities possible. So they've already made a determination that that new transformer is not in conflict with power there, or it's a match, or there's no issues with that with a new transformer?
Yeah, the applicant could elaborate, but I know that they've already been out to the school to assess the various utility needs and structural needs of the building, and so they've already gotten a good idea of what they need to provide and change and update in terms of utility equipment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's anybody who'd like to speak for or against the proposed rezoning, please come up to the podium and give us your name, where you live, and give us your comments.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, I'm John. I live at 901 North Broadway, the corner house right there. Yes, sir.
Yep.
Or yes, ma'am, excuse me. The few issues I do have are no fencing and a little bit of privacy. These are people that are coming and going once a year, and this doesn't seem like a problem now, ladies and gentlemen, but in the future, we're gonna have a problem right below...request permission to come up to the map, just real quick.
Sure.
I can't remember. This is...this right here is the east side, if I'm not mistaken. The east side in itself has its lot of problems. It is, for some reason, the worst part of the worst. Everything on this side appears to be bad, but I don't know...I don't usually get problems. I usually call the law enforcement on this side. How do I do this? If this building goes in here now and it gets set up the way you guys wish it to be, that doesn't seem to be a problem, right? You're gonna have high income, you're gonna have a lot of people coming in, the revenue, and it is gonna bring up the property value. Okay? But in the future, in three, five, 10, who knows when, I just bought this house two years ago. I'm afraid of resale value of my own personal property. I don't know, someone told me last meeting that these apartments can bring in a better resale value on your property. Never heard that before in my life. And I do apologize, I'm pretty eager to this, okay? And I know you guys know way more than I do, but I'm really concerned about my future here at this place. Vandalism, burglary, drugs, you name it, they all belong anywhere in the city. But right now, you're concentrating it on my area where I live. And there's...the lady behind me, she has people just dropping stuff off at her place, and that's not even close to half the issues. We got law enforcement, we gotta worry about them. They're doing a great job doing what they can do when they do do it, but they're still...you're adding a new factor with bringing more people from the outside in. If I'm not mistaken, these are gonna be high-level rental property, correct? Like, single units for single personnel that have a lot of money to do these rental properties.
I believe it refers to market...
Market rate.
Thank you for correcting me, sir. Thank you. That's fine and dandy for now, but when it becomes, well, low income or fair market value for future reference, what's it gonna bring in next time? This comes to the value of the property and all of its assessments behind that, okay? With that statement in place, also have a big issue, again, I think I said fencing. Someone says no chain link fence, that's fine. That makes...that's right there in itself makes sense. Broad iron fences keeps the people in their property safe, and it keeps my property from dog attacks or people wandering kids or something. That's actually kind of a child safety fact there, sort of. Then the back end of this building is parking. You're gonna have a whole host of new people. Loud music, loud pipes, a lot of motorcycles, people on the weekends, you know. I work Monday through Friday, I'm a VA employee. I work hard Monday through Friday. When I go home, I like quietness. That's not gonna happen here pretty soon because you're gonna have people coming in and going. I can't stop them, and neither can the police officers. With this few factors that I have rolling in my head, there's so much more, I was gonna bore you guys with this, but I'm pretty sure this young lady has a lot to say too. The property value, the value of the house now and in the future, to include what exactly can y'all do as a city commission to not only protect me, but protect those people that live there. These are gonna be, as y'all would say, professionals. And in the professional world, when you have nicer things there, and you have nicer things laying around, more crime can start happening. Lock your doors all you want, break windows easy. What else can I say about this? This is just a really, really bad idea in my eyes. If there's some way y'all could soothe the savage beast, please, bring it to my attention, I'll back off and let it go. But the parking itself is gonna be horrendous because these people are gonna start parking right facing this lady or facing my house with their headlights and stuff in my building. You're probably saying to yourself, well, just put blinds up. Well, that's fine, but I didn't buy the house to put blinds up. Bought it because I liked the location, and I knew that building was gonna someday be something. I was kinda hoping it'd be in a historical, it'd be more of a display. But that hasn't gone my way. And if I remember correctly, Mr. Hanson, God love him, he explained to me some of the things. He couldn't explain everything because he didn't even know then. If he did, he couldn't tell me. So with that said, I think I've been able to express myself with you all, and I appreciate your time. Honest engine, thank you. I just...I feel like this has already been said and done, and I'm just here to express myself, but if we can stop this whole thing and... Your name's Jonathan, right?
Yeah.
Okay. If Jonathan and them are doing a great job like they have all the other schools, awesome. They're gonna redo, furnish the inside and outside, that's great, but they're not gonna do it for free, and they're not doing it for no reason at all. So that's what's playing around in my head. This has already been said and done. I don't know anything else more about it. I can't say anything more than this is just a bad idea. Can you please make me feel better?
Thank you.
Thank you again for your time, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak for or against the proposed rezoning?
Hi, my name's Larry Tim Carr, and I live at 813 North 8th Street, directly west of the parking lot there at the school. And my first thought is how many people you're going to have in that building. 27 apartments, that's...those aren't very big, can't be very big apartments in that place. That's reminds me of a sardine can in a way. And then, as far as that parking lot goes, I'm gonna...where I live, right there, just west of the park, down and west of the parking lot, I'm gonna have car lights shining at my house all night long. I've had that before, and I can't see how that works unless they put up a very nice privacy fence on that side. And also, as he was saying, the noise level there, motorcycles, cars, loud pipes and stuff, that's...I can't...that's gonna be terrible. I'm not saying that that shouldn't be done, but I think there ought to be some more thinking, more planning before this is done. We've got a fairly nice, quiet neighborhood now, but we've also had some problems with theft around there, and I wonder too, will that get any worse? You know? Well, this is all I had to say, and I thought I'd mentioned it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm Jo Tim Carr, and I'm with him in 813 North 8th. We were at the meeting last week, and that has given me a week to think about things, and there are some things that I'm still a little bit uncomfortable with. The number of the apartments seem to be pretty intense, 27? You still pick in 27 apartments?
Ma'am, address your questions to us, please.
Yes, well, I just wanted to double check before I said 27.
Address them to us.
Okay, so he wants to put in 27 apartments, and that to me seems a lot to just bring into that neighborhood. I was gonna say Broadway Apartments is very quiet. It isn't a whole lot of apartments there. So I don't have a problem with an apartment going in. Please don't misunderstand me. I'm fine with an apartment house being there, but I'm just not really crazy about the 27 apartments. 27. 27 families are going to move into that lot, and it's not that big. I mean, you think a city block, okay, no problem, but 27 is pretty intensive. I'm also assuming that they are assuming that there will just be one vehicle per apartment for the parking spaces, but I don't know too many families that have just one vehicle. So I was curious as to where the overflow parking would go if they had more than one...if they needed more than one spot, and if that would have to go on the street, which it would because on the north, on the east, on the south, and a little bit on the west is all a very steep slope, so there's no level land once you get past the shadows there. It all goes downhill after that. Another concern that I had would be the lighting. Now, the reason that I'm concerned is on the Broadway Apartments, their lighting is so bright. I mean, they use warm lighting, don't get me wrong. They didn't put in blue lighting, they used the warm red light, but it is so bright that if it were not for the trees that gave a shade, we would not have a nighttime. Those...the parking...can you kind of scoot it up a little bit? Where they're covered garages and on the side of their building, there are plenty of lights. There are...oh, I counted them the other night, but anyway. So there's so much light there that you can walk over there and read a book. That's how bright the lights are. So basically, on the next block down, they have no nighttime. If you want me to do a study, I'd be happy to do a study. We can measure it, and I don't really particularly want to have to live with that. I would prefer less lighting. I do know for a fact that if you use really intense lighting, it just causes darker shadows, and crime just moves into the darker shadows. I'm not going to get into the crime that we have in our neighborhood. We have plenty of it. There's a lot of stealing and theft goes on from the small things all the way up to my car. So I don't like shadows, but I don't...I want nighttime too. I would really appreciate not having that thing lit up so that they could see it from the space station. The sidewalks around are in really poor condition. I had a kind of a question about that last week, but they said that would be left up to the owners. Those are just my concerns. I don't feel like there's anything that's going to be done about them, but I do expressly am very concerned about the parking lot. I'm very concerned about overflow parking. I'm not very happy about 27 apartments. I'm just not crazy about that number. I don't see why there has to be 27. They're all one-bedroom. We were discussing it last week, and we were told that, you know, they were hoping that it would be middle-income, better-income people that would rent it, possibly officers off of the fort and young professionals, which that's fine. I don't care who rents it, just so long as they're nice neighbors. How long they'll be my neighbor, I guess they won't be my neighbor very long if they're only gonna stay there for a year, whatever officers stay there. I don't know. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. I said quite a lot last week, and I think this week I'm just...I don't know. I guess I'm just resolved that it's going in and I'm going to have to learn to live with it, and if it's more than what I can handle, I'll just put my house on the market and move, you know? And I'm really disappointed that there's 27 apartments going in there. I don't see where it has to be that many apartments, and I don't really see where the neighborhood...I don't know. We all work, we all go away in the daytime, so it could probably handle the traffic, it just wouldn't be a whole lot of fun. You know, it is a very quiet neighborhood, you know, not counting the ambulances, because we are an older neighborhood. A lot of the residents that live there are older people. And...well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ken Gilbert, 822 Dakota Street, so I'm half a block away. Although I'm for it, I don't want to argue with anything that's been said by my neighbors who have been here longer than me. They seem to all be valid points. I purchased 822 in June of last year, so I've only been here a year, and I'm half a block away, whereas everybody else seems to be across the street. When I heard the rumors that this might be a possibility, I made it a point to go by the Bend Day Apartments, and I don't drive anymore, so I'm either on my bicycle or I'm walking, and I can sure everybody here, day, night, or weekend, the loudest thing I've heard are all those air conditioner window boxes. And so I'm...as opposed to an empty building that, if it's on the historical record, is probably gonna be there forever, I would be in favor of apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak for or against the proposed rezoning? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Sir?
Hello, everybody. I'm Jonathan Clark, representative for Exact Architects and the owner, Caleb Buehlund.
So...I'm sorry, is it Clark?
Clark.
Clark. A couple of questions that came up, Mr. Clark, that maybe you could address for us. The 27 apartments, basically, what is the...what are the sizes of the apartments?
The average size, and thank you again for everybody's comments. Hopefully, we can answer them and make you guys feel a little more comfortable about this going in. The average size for the apartments is around 700 square feet.
I'm sorry, how many?
Seven hundred square feet. There's some that are smaller, a couple that are bigger. So I just...
Is that...how many bedrooms is that?
A one-bedroom.
A one-bedroom?
Yeah.
And then the...and you should came...can you explain the...what's being done by parking and parking garages and just the overall parking scheme?
Yeah, so with the multi-family, 27 apartments require one parking spot per bedroom, so would be 27 required parking spots, and we're providing 31 with one accessible. So is it 12 will be covered parking?
Yeah, like 13.
13 will be covered, and the remainder will be just surface parking. The concern with the parking lights, I think, is alleviated from the elevated site and the parking structures blocking those spots that are pointing away from the site.
They'll be enclosed structures, not just carport-type things?
No, they'll be...they'll have four sides with a garage door.
I realize it's a little inconvenient. I've seen some places in town that have been renovated like this, and parking like that, you have eight-foot wide by six, eight-feet by six by about 18-feet-long stalls. Is it possible that that could be...have two cars parked, one behind the other? I know most cars are about 10-feet long, whatever, but did you look at that? You have some places that have that, but with two cars parked right behind yours, you have a designated spot with two...is that possible?
I will look again. We explored that at the very beginning, and it...to make it usable, the depth was a little more than what we could get, especially with the setback requirements.
I didn't know if that was feasible or optional. If it's longer than 18, 20, it's 20-feet long, it may accommodate two cars.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that again and see what qualifies a tandem spot or tandem garage for that and...
If you don't mind, the question came up going in. It's interesting that 27 apartments, so looking at the schematic and the layout of what you looked at for the building, converting it to this 700-square feet, was 27 the maximum apartments that could go in there, or was it feasible that you thought that was a...justify the number. What are that number? How did you come up with 27? Because that's an issue. That's a lot. How'd you come up with it?
I think it's based on the space it's already given, the historic requirements, and what the building needs with community space, the existing circulation, and then just the existing classrooms. They're essentially turning each classroom into an apartment, and then some of them are...have been changed since, and so they're gonna be cut into two and made into just, you know, slightly smaller apartments. And then the gymnasium is cut in half and turned into apartments, and then provides a pretty nice community space, which just provides the tenants some nice spaces and then also meets the historic requirements for renovation.
I need to understand, Chair or Julie maybe, you made a comment about historical requirements, so I need to understand that, is this still a valid issue that renovating a building, doing this reconstruction he's doing with existing building that was one-time historical, and he's supposed to maintain some structural integrity interior with historical standards?
Jonathan can correct me if I'm wrong, but they're applying for historical tax credits through the state, and those carry a different set of requirements from what just our regular historic review entails. So up on the screen is an existing floor plan. You can see how the classrooms are laid out, and then this is a proposed residential floor plan. It's a little harder to talk because they have some more details in there, but it's the same configuration in keeping with the classroom, keeping that internal circulation and keeping most of those walls. Like he said, they'll be dividing up that central gymnasium space into some units, but the...around the exit... the, around the exterior where those classrooms are, that configuration will be staying the same.
Thank you.
I've been to a sale at that building at one time, and the parking's tight, but it is doable in the configurations they have. Don't our regulations require a certain amount of focused lighting for the site for parking and off, provide for no, a maximum off-site lead for lighting, things like that?
It doesn't quite get into that level of detail, but they're planning to use the cutoff lights that are gonna be mounted on the building, so there's not gonna be any surface lighting in the parking lot.
Okay.
And so the intent with those light fixtures is to contain that lighting to the site. And as he said, to the west and the south with those garage buildings, that will help with some of that spillover, too, to help keep that from spilling into the properties to the west.
The garage buildings, will they be in compatible styling to the school so that they'll be compatible with the neighborhood?
They will be compatible with the neighborhood. They won't be brick, it'll be a hardy panel siding, pitched roof, single pitched roof.
Also, I noticed that there's quite a few trees provided on site, but in looking at the, the plan that we had up a little earlier, most of those trees are existing. So really, about the only landscaping you'll be adding to the site are a few bushes around the parking lot.
Yeah.
And there's no landscaping at all on the north side, I noticed, it's not provided on the north side.
Yeah, no, kind of minimal.
The west is up on that map, so. So there's nothing being added on the north side at all?
Uh, no, no, no additional landscaping. All the existing trees will remain, and the additional landscaping is just to shelter or seclude the new community space and then the new parking structures.
On the south, here are some community spaces for grilling and outdoor games, and it's a little bit hard to tell on the PDF, but there's landscaping proposed around those areas in addition to around the parking lot.
If you don't mind, one other thing that always comes up in the issue is waste management and designated dumpsters and dump properly, or coordination with that that you've already done, or maybe I missed that, I'm sorry, but what is your plan with that many apartments and designated areas that, for waste management and keep on top of that? What is your plan?
The current location is next to the, it's in the southwest corner of the parking lot, right there. So they'll, the garbage truck will pull in, turn the corner, back up, and dump the garbage.
That's the primary area on that path.
That's the primary and only. The other option was to place it on the north side where that existing drive is. That's a little more difficult to get to, so a little more visible from the street. So we're, both locations are options, but they're, the garbage and waste management has been addressed and will be provided for the tenants in the large enough capacity.
And that does have to be enclosed per our regulations, so there won't be just a dumpster sitting out there.
Any other questions?
I have a few, Mr. Chairman. Julie, so just to confirm, this does meet the minimum landscape requirements for the city?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, and of course, you know, you could ask for additional, but it does meet the minimum required.
And then Mr. Clark, a couple of questions. One, on the parking, is there adjacent on-street parking available around all four sides? Or do you know how many sides have adjacent parking available?
I don't think any have on-street parking. I haven't studied that.
Yeah, on-street parking's allowed.
On all four sides?
Yeah, I, I don't think Broadway is even marked as no parking. I believe it's allowed, yes, on all four sides.
And then just to clarify on the, on the layout plan of the lofts, you have two floors that you're building out, or are they all on one floor?
There's two stories and then a unit in the basement.
Okay.
Which is a small portion of the plan, where the existing boiler and mechanical equipment was for the school is where a unit's going in the basement, and then ground floor, similar above on the second floor.
All right, thank you.
So going back to the concerns about security, how many exterior doors, and are they secure, is the key locked?
Yeah, they'll all be secure entrances. There's two on the east and two on the west. Two on the west are access from the parking lot. The security lighting, required one-foot handle at all walking surfaces, that will be met. The entrances will all be well-lit with the partial cutoff lights. Yeah, all entrances will be secure.
Could we go back to the larger footprint? So again, another concern I heard was, so you got the driveway that comes in from the northwest. So I'm assuming that there's no plans for any fencing that would go along the north's length of the property? Some sort of security fencing or, you know?
No.
And then, so are you familiar with the Bim Day school?
Yeah.
How many apartments do you have in Bim Day?
Similar number, I think there might be twenty-five or twenty-six.
Yeah, it's a couple fewer, I wanna say twenty-five.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for discussion among the commissioners.
I think it's, you know, in the interest of greater good, in the issue of security, in my opinion, the issue of a building that is vacant or not being used properly with crime and ten of the things I can think of, that this is at this moment a better use of that building and need for a single-level apartments in this town. Makes sense to, you get on the tax rolls and get it converted to something meaningful, which is, we have available, so I think it's, it's a good option.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners or discussion?
I would just, I would just reaffirm what Commissioner Clark said about just better than a, it is on a national register, so, you know, we're not gonna tear it down. What's a better, is there a better alternative? Probably not than this. It's better than staying vacant and becoming dilapidated and becoming a building of opportunity for that type of community.
And it has been vacant for seven years.
Right, absolutely.
I think it's a favorable use for an otherwise sparsely-used building and that could easily become disrepair and blight in the neighborhood instead of something a little bit more positive. A little surprised they can get twenty-seven units in it, but they're gonna be single fam, or not single family, but only one bedrooms, which should limit the number of tenants and the amount of parking needed, so.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and accept a motion from commissioners. The, our choices are to recommend approval based on the findings and facts of the rezoning request from R-16 to RMF. Recommend denial of the same, or table the issue for additional information.
I'd like to make a motion, we recommend the approval of rezoning of the property at 801 North Broadway from R-16 to RMF Multifamily District.
And that's based on the findings?
Based on the findings that we have been given, yes.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Proven, unanimous? Do you have anything else for us?
I'll just add for the record that this begins the fourteen-day protest petition period, and residents within the two-hundred-foot notification area have fourteen days from this action to turn in a protest petition to our city clerk's office prior to this being considered by the City Commission.
Anything else from the commissioners? Thank you, we're adjourned.